Down at Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, March 14th, 2024. Call of order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Leba, councilmember Greer.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt.
Here.
Mayor Polgura.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to welcome down Pastor David Knight with Bethel Baptist Church for our invocation and to lead us in the pledge.
Shall we stand as we pray together? Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are the most high living God. We pray right now that you would be glorified in this meeting. Many thoughts, many feelings are here. We ask that your spirit would be present in a mighty way. Thank you that you sent your son to die for us, that we could be in right relationship with you and with one another, and help us to reflect that tonight in this meeting. We'll give you all the glory. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated.
Next up, call the public. This time, members of the public may comment on matters listed on the agenda or solely on matters within the jurisdiction of the town. Any person wishing to address the council must register their name with the town clerk prior to the commencement of the meeting. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter, comment upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Clerk? Let me add, we'll be calling four names, two at each podium. You'll each have three minutes to speak. You'll hear one ding, which will be at a 30-second warning, and then once your time is up, it'll be displayed on top that it's up, as well as you'll hear the clerk ring a bell a few times. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so we have Bill Williams, James Quinn, Diane Gomez, and Bella Morgan.
Welcome.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Bill Williams, longtime Arizona resident, longtime Prescott Valley resident. It is disheartening that dozens of residents in Superstition Hills neighborhood believe the end of the fight to stop development is near, and they fear that they will be experiencing another four more years of bulldozing and dust and bad traffic and noise that scares off wildlife. The solution to this kind of problem is for the town to incentivize developers so they give back to the community somehow so we feel we actually got something out of the deal. After I started the nonprofit group Save PV Pronghorn Antelope, I spoke to Mr. Whitney, developer of Assisted Living Center, which will be talked about later tonight, and he said he would engage in discussions on creating a wildlife corridor or habitat. We're not asking for money or acreage now, but we can ask developers to get involved and engage in discussions. I look forward to working with the town's new planner, Roxanne Johnston, in her efforts to research a wildlife habitat. Some of the research we need is described in my article, which is still on prescottenews.com about our antelope herd. Other examples of development policies that work can be found in high-density plans being considered in some California towns. There, developers are setting aside approximately one apartment out of five, or one house of five, at a lower-market rate, or made easier to purchase by police, firefighters, nurses, doctors, teachers, even people who can't afford our PV rates. And we should be considering 1% of all development units being set aside for homeless veterans. These concepts can even be applied to places like the Assisted Living Center. What the developers get is goodwill at a time they really need goodwill, and maybe they get some of the impact fees waived. We don't need any more structures. We need people in job categories we're short of who can live in something affordable and attainable. Your new development directors, and there's two different ones, should not be telling developers to come here. They should be telling the people we need they should come here, such as medical specialists, which we're short of. So, council, incentivize developers to give back to those adults and children who already live here while altering their high-density thinking for newcomers. It would be wonderful if the town, along with the antelope experts, some developers, our nonprofit, joined forces to create a wildlife habitat or corridor, but you should also consider something similar to the high-density plan I mentioned. Let's stop rubber stamping and fast-tracking and start thinking outside the box. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Diane Gomez, 11550 East Deer Charlie Lane in Prescott Country Club, and I'm here to talk about the government tank quarry, or mine, where, per the FSG website, they will be blasting granite out of the ground. For those who don't know, FSG is requesting to locate this mine between the developments of Stoneridge Prescott Country Club in the city of Dewey-Humboldt, closest to the city of Dewey-Humboldt. This parcel has a current land use of residential, and in order to approve this mine, the town council will have to go against, and I would say way against, the current general plan, which was voted in by Prescott Valley voters. Just to give you an update, we're doing an official petition to change it from a minor to a major general plan amendment, and we don't mean major general plan light. We mean as vetted as you can. We already have over 1,500 Prescott Valley voter signatures. Unfortunately, Prescott Country Club cannot sign this petition, even though it will affect us, especially that beautiful piece of land. Once it becomes a mine in that area, I can imagine it'll look something like the commercial zone where Ace is located, because who will want to live? Near a mine. I just don't know. So, we have more than enough signatures for that major, and we have thousands of letters to the Attorney General asking for no mines within three miles. Of course, probably won't get that. And we have hundreds of nonofficial petition signatures by the people in Prescott Country Club, Prescott, Paulden, Dewey-Humboldt. Anyway, so we really would hope you don't approve it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, James Quinn. I'm a resident of Prescott Valley, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the annexation to the Town of Prescott Valley for what's commonly called the Lake Shore 650. Makes sense to me in terms of sewage treatment, protecting and recharging the aquifer. If it was developed as county two-acre parcels, there could be 325 wells and 325 septic systems. It seems to me that would be inefficient and wasteful of water. Also, Chino Valley in its early development had issues with waste from septic systems getting into their drinking water, testing positive for E. coli bacteria, and eventually they had to go to the town sewer treatment. And so we'd certainly want to prevent that. I yield back the remainder of my time.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Bella Morgan, and I'm going to be reading on behalf of Justin Beechey. My name is Justin Beechey. I am a resident of Prescott Valley and a new parent. We need to make housing more affordable for my generation. This is a simple supply and demand equation. Every time you deny a housing project, you increase the cost of rent for all of us. I understand this is senior housing, but it is still housing. I think 10000 University Drive is far enough away from Superstition Hills, and I think this proposal is okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
James Turner, Tim Reynolds, Ron Purcell, and Jean Sabo.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name's James Turner. I'm a resident of Prescott Valley. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I wanted to thank you all for the great job you've been doing in moving this city forward into the future. There's more and more alternative forms of transportation coming towards us. I'm talking about bicycles, trikes, e-bikes, and e-trikes. You see a lot of them on the road these days. We're out there to get some exercise, save fuel, and just generally keep ourselves in better health. Many roadways in Prescott Valley have sufficient paved right-of-way outside of the white painted line for a bicycle path. This would afford a greater degree of safety and would serve as reminder for motorists to be more cognizant of bicycle riders in general. I've spoken with the street department and was assured there was, quote, "a discussion about this matter," end of quote, but it doesn't seem like anything's moving forward. How about getting this simple task underway? It should not take a lengthy examination or a costly study. Let somebody go out and assess the streets with a wide enough shoulder and get a stencil and paint away, by executive order if need be. I'd be glad to volunteer to go out and map some likely roadways that we could use for north-south and east-west usage by bicycles mainly. Let's see. A little help for safer riding is what I'm asking for, for me, for my darling wife, friends, and all those who already ride out there. Thank you for your time, consideration, and help with this. If you need me, you all got my number. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll have someone from staff reach out in that department for you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
My name's Tim Reynolds. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. This is about the NCU rezoning project. I strongly feel it's a wrong project for the wrong location. I have written several letters to the city council with a lot of our concerns. Please ask tough questions tonight, as we are not able to. Please get straightforward answers to those questions. How much are rents? Mr. Whitney knows what his projected rents are. We should know them as well. He talks about Touchmark, a beautiful facility. I've been or I've done the tour. They start their one-bedroom independent living apartments at $5,800 a month. The prices rise quickly from there. Does this benefit our retirees out of Prescott Valley or out-of-state retirees who can afford these prices? Why do all assisted living apartments have full kitchens? By law, all assisted living residents get three meals from the facility. Sedona Winds, all of Prescott, Prescott Valley, and the eight facilities I called in Phoenix, none had full kitchens for their assisted living. The most common question was why. At most, they had a microwave and a refrigerator. This is also an obvious safety issue here, as several of the facilities I talked to said. When this started almost a year ago, Mr. Whitney stated he was doing this so he could rent all these units as demand dictated. He may start out with 50 assisted living units, but can drop down to zero if there's no demand. How can this city plan future projects if this location can be anywhere from zero to 50 assisted living apartments? Mr. Whitney has stated he is here for all phases of retirement. Let's make assisted living just that. Remove the kitchen design from all assisted living apartments. Make this a requirement in the final development plan. The four-story apartment building is just way too tall for the area. It stands on the highest ground in three directions and is visible from miles away. If you must vote yes, please consider removing at least one floor. This is the first memory care facility since 1999 that is going to be above ground level. Margaret T. Morris is the only other facility that has second-level memory care, and both of their floors are memory care. Anyone who has been involved in memory care can see the safety issues here. CAFMA sees them, but there is no statute prohibiting this, so it meets minimum safety standards. Please consider requiring this to be moved to the second floor, which would be at ground floor level. How about an outside area for memory care residents? Last week, Ernest and I reviewed the plans together, confirming what I knew months earlier. There is no outdoor area for memory care, a first for this area. We have spent hours concerned about a dog park, but nothing about our most vulnerable in an open area for them to be in.
Thank you, sir.
These are just a few of the issues. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Reminder, if we can keep the talks about the NCU building, if we can save that for the public hearing or the open call there, that would be great. This will be for other items other than what's on the agenda. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Jean Sabo. I live in Prescott Valley, and I'm in favor of prudent development. A city has to develop, but I think that the university development is not prudent development. It's just another rush to fit through the Arizona Water Hole, because it's another rental that's being approved, and I'm concerned about water in Prescott Valley. There's been a concern for 20 years. We do not regenerate what we withdraw. If we draw an aquifer down, it will not regenerate. We will not have water. If you don't believe what I'm saying, call Arizona Water Resources, folks. I'm not lying. They'll give you the facts. You know the facts, but I feel you're ignoring them. Also, I live on Sheridan Lane, and with this development, if that's opened, Sheridan Lane is already a throughway through a neighborhood. It's a feeder street, so it's busy, but it has become more busy, and there are children and people walking. We have no sidewalks, so the developer's going to have to commit to doing something to better the neighborhood, putting in sidewalks so it's safe. We've had our mailbox knocked down seven times in two months by people speeding. One of them was the city truck, because a car was coming so fast, it couldn't stay on its side of the road, and they had to hit our mailbox. So I think some things have to be done. You have to look, do we have enough police to cover the growth of our development? Do we just keep approving development when we don't have the resources to take care of what's happening? We're not going to have the quality of life that we currently have if that's what you keep doing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
I'm Ron Purcell. Lived in Prescott Valley for nine years, and this is about an email that I sent in to the town council back on March 1st, and it looks like about six people read it and two people answered. So I'm just curious tonight about who else has some response to make on this, and I'd like to see that the town knows about this issue. And the issue is busing of illegals into Prescott Valley. And so I'll read the email here and see what you guys think about it. Email says, "I'm wondering if you have seen the news article about Katie Hobbs trying to send busloads of illegal immigrants into Springerville, a small town near Sholo. That town didn't put up with it as described in the article." And then it gave a link to the article, and then FYI, an excerpt of that article is attached. So my question is, what will our response be when they try that with our town? Will we have the guts to say no, like Springerville did? Will our citizens even be told what is going on? If we want to preserve any character at all for Prescott Valley, we need to be prepared like Springerville was. I posted the above information on Nextdoor at the end of February, and it received positive responses from some other readers. The next day, when I checked, however, my post and all the responses had been removed, apparently by censors. Evidently, there is someone in a position of power who does not want this topic being discussed in public. So my questions for the Prescott Valley town leadership are, are illegal immigrants being brought into Prescott Valley, or is that being planned? And if so, where will they be housed? And if not, what are the town's plans for dealing with a situation like the one that has occurred in Springerville? Your response on this issue would be greatly appreciated. So as I mentioned, I heard back from two people on this subject, and they were alarmed about it, and so I'm just curious what the rest of you folks think. And I want to make sure the town knows about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have Chris Russo, Patricia Betzel, and Attilano Olivas.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Oh, thank you. Mayor, town council, staff. I asked if I could do this beforehand because I didn't know if I'd be stepping on anybody's toes, but I want to get up in front of everybody and advocate for our legislator, Kwang Wynn, who is running again for Legislative District One. And for those of you that are pro-Second Amendment people, you know, advocates, he has, in his capacity as the Military Affairs and Public Safety Committee Chair, he has killed 17 anti-gun bills that were put before his committee. He just put them in the trash. So I wanted to remind everybody that this man is pretty much our sole backstop for Second Amendment rights for Arizona in this legislature, in this legislative district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello, Patricia Betzel, Prescott Valley. I applaud the town on tasking Donna Kennedy with creating a wildlife overlay for Prescott Valley. One of her staff gave us some insight last Monday night, but there were some concerns that that created, because she mentioned that it would take several years to put this into place. Why is several years a great concern? Because, number one, it casts doubt on the town's sincerity about creating the wildlife corridors. Normally, only two years are needed to track the migration routes. And why we don't really need to do that here? Because the pronghorn aren't hidden. We already know where they live, even where they give birth. Glassford Hill, Lake Shore 650, the Aqua Fria Basin there that stretches north and south, the land around the university project. The pronghorn that used to inhabit other parts of PV, including the land we are standing on right now, have been pushed to the boundaries of the town, and they're not hiding anywhere because they each require about 50 acres, so no one's got one in their backyard. The other reason that several years cast doubt is that at this very moment, all three of these existing pronghorn habitats are up for annexation or major development. We're worried that the council will approve them. Glassford Hill, recently acquired and publicly funded to conserve the land and wildlife and to host passive recreation, is a subject of dispute now. Town council wants to create an amusement park to make money. That would destroy the place where pronghorn can now be seen without even going up the hill, and putting in a bike lift would even push them further back into those hills. Lake Shore 650 is prime pronghorn habitat. Over 200 pronghorn have been sighted recently, just standing at Lake Shore Drive, where the majority of the pronghorn live, up and down that Aqua Fria Basin. The fans propose includes annexation, 3,500 homes, commercial retail development. That would destroy not only the habitat on their land, but that of the migratory route north and south of there on the river. And the university project, well, that's where they give birth. That is the nursery for our pronghorn, and you can see them when that season occurs, just by driving out on Superstition Road. So the good news is, it's not too late. The animals that roamed in millions alongside the buffalo are still here, and we'd get to see them every day if we want to. They don't like to be moved, though. They rarely survive it due to muscle myopathy. Similar to when a cat catches a bird, the bird goes into shock and dies, even if it hasn't been harmed, and chasing them with helicopters to capture them is equally as dangerous. So we asked the council and Development Services, don't take several years to take action. It's not, it'll be too late. We can leave them right where they are right now on Glassford Hill, Lake Shore 650, the Aqua Fria, and around the university. Keep them safe by not approving these projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Citizens in Prescott Valley, I greet you. Happy to be here with you. Town clerk, town manager, I greet you. Now, you people not too happy with it. I have newspaper printed out where you're making a traffic study. You, when you first came aboard, I offered to take you out to ride, show you our own conditions, and to make a plan for overgrowth and to get a road safe and sound. Now I hear sirens. I hear more accidents. Our insurance rates, my housing rates are going up. This irresponsibility of growth is causing a problem. You first have to look at your infrastructure and see if you have the traffic situation underhand to grow. You have to check your water system. I have documents here that you were doing that nothing's come through. I look at your weekly readings. I don't see anything on it. I've talked to you city manager on utilities. I got no transparency out of him. We're still on the same problem. When are you guys going to change it? Listen to the public here. I sit here and listen to them. Now, I talked to the public right now. There's going to be four seats open. Pick other city councils that are not involved in real estate. You not have a problem. Also, the mayor ran. No one ran against him. Pick a person to run against him and clean house here, as Mr. Trump says, clean the swamp.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, anyone else?
No one else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item four, council communications. Start on the end. Councilman Greer. Councilman. Vice Mayor.
Oh, sorry. I would like to talk about a safety study that has been on some social media. I would like to talk about a safety study that has been on some social media. Just to set the record straight and be factual. So we approved a study for... We approved a study on February 22nd on the Consent Agenda. And it is to study safe routes to school and other issues in the community that, in order to make our streets safer, so kind of addressing what you were talking about, Mr. Olivas. So we received a grant in the amount of about $500,000 to use and review our safe routes to school and our streets, and to determine what needs to be done. So this is a grant. It's not money that's coming from our sales tax. It's not money that's coming from the general fund. It's a grant that's coming to Prescott Valley, free to, free money to our community, to be used fully to analyze, study of our streets and areas that have higher accident rates. The findings will help us prioritize capital improvements, which are future projects, to make our roadways safer. Plus, having this study completed may enable us to qualify for additional grant money for capital projects, like more sidewalks, more crosswalks. So the grant that we're getting cannot be used for projects. It can only be used for the study that we're doing. Otherwise, the money would have to go back to the organizer or the funder. So please understand that this money cannot be used for capital projects right now, but it'll help us get additional capital projects. And so along my police lines, I am very fond of our police department here. They do a great job. We had a retirement of Master Officer Brad Penner yesterday. He's been with our department for quite a while and has done good work in our Prescott Valley Police Department. We also welcomed yesterday a brand-new lateral police officer from Mesa. So he's coming up with his wife and three little kids from Mesa to settle in Prescott Valley. And his name is Matthew Brown. He happens to be the nephew of Marty Yule, who's our Executive Director of our Prescott Valley Chamber. And he, when he took the floor and talked, he said, you need to know, to those of us in the room, you need to know that Prescott Valley is the place to be. So lateral police officers down in the Phoenix area that want to transfer their number-one choice in northern Arizona is Prescott Valley. And also, a reminder is that when I got appointed to this council in 2019, we were the eleventh safest city in Arizona. And currently, we are the third safest city in Arizona. So as we grew larger by 6.9% in four years, we became safer. So also, please keep that in mind. And finally, I'm a proud mama of a police officer in the city of Long Beach. He's been there eight years. And so I support our police department 100%. Thank you, Chief Tyser, for everything you do.
Councilman?
In case you missed our study session last Thursday, was notoriously empty, audience was kind of weird. They are doing a couple different studies right now, one of which they're taking a survey on called ACT UP. So if you go to Cympo, C-Y-M-P-O dot org, and at the top, you can, there's a heading for ACT UP, and you can actually, and I think what reference you were talking about, bike lanes, walkability, just all those additional alternative transit options. They are doing a survey on that. So Cympo is the metropolitan planning for the whole area, as far as transit and transportation goes. So we definitely want to give our, share our opinions in those surveys while they're in their planning process. That's all.
Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a couple things. Our monthly report is available to the council as well as to the public. It's available on the town's website. It's a compilation of all of the activities by department and activity across the organization. So that is now available for this past month. And if anyone is looking for something fun to do in our community, not this weekend, but next weekend, March 23rd, from 11:00 to 4:00, is the annual Extravaganza Event. It is an awesome family event. So if you have kids or grandkids, neighbors' kids, and you want to come out, it's pretty much free, other than the food that you would want to buy at a food truck. But it is here at the Civic Center campus, and it's just loaded with lots of fun activities for families. So that's going to be, again, next, the 23rd. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. How's the temperature out there? I don't know if I'm getting sick or not, but I'm freezing. So if it gets too hot out there, let me know, and we'll try to adjust the temperature for you. Is it warm? We'll get the air going a little bit. Consent Agenda, all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately for discussion. Counsel, we've got a chance to review. If there's nothing to be removed, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I make a motion to approve all items listed under Consent Agenda by electronic vote. All second?
Clerk, please call the vote.
Let pass this unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, item 7A, ZMC 23-007, Arizona Senior Living Community for Consideration of Possible Action. And this is a public hearing, which is open right now.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Item before you is ZMC 23-007 for the Arizona Senior Living Community. A little bit of history on the project. It was formerly the North Central University Site. It's been vacant for some years and has been vandalized extensively. So the subject property was annexed on April 15th, 2004, and given a zoning designation of RCU 70, which was the closest to the county designation as it was annexed in. The property was then rezoned on August 25th, 2005, from the RCU 70, the designation came in from the county, to PLPAD, Public Lands Planned Area Development, to permit the university site to be constructed there. A final development plan was approved on August 25th, 2005, for construction of a 53,320-square-foot campus administration and office building. To the north of the property, if I may, to the north of, this is the site here, as you can see, it is located along University Drive, near the intersection of Sheridan Road and Superstition Drive. The site is somewhat remote, kind of off to the side there. And as I mentioned, the property to the north, but state land, which is currently RCU, as you can see here, to the northeast, the property is the adjacent longtime residential subdivision, known as Prescott Valley Unit 20. On the west of the property, but state land that encompasses Section 18, which is also zoned RCU 70. The subject property is within the town's Growth and Development Tier Two. And Tier Two development provides for growth that is a logical extension of development and infrastructure to contiguous existing development in Tier One. The previous use of the university site extended needed infrastructure to the site. This included water, wastewater, and the University Drive roadway section. This property is being looked at as a senior living community, which will be comprised of 259 total units on approximately 49 acres. It would include 83 cottages, 136 apartments, 11 row homes, and 10 additional apartment units in the existing building. This project will also be proposed to have 19 memory care units in the existing building, which is a standalone restaurant and a poolhouse. As you can see on the screen, this is the proposed roadway that the applicant is working through Arizona State Lands to secure the easement and the property itself. This is a configuration which may change based on topography, based on some of the engineering standards that need to go into building the roadway. So what you see is a proposed roadway, and it is subject to change. On the proposed roadway, there is also a secondary emergency access, which is required by fire department. And that would be a little bit south of the University Drive roadway. And it would be built to standards to accommodate a 90,000-pound fire apparatus. Initial traffic impact analysis was done on the project. It is ongoing and subject to review both by ADOT and the town engineer and the town traffic engineer. So again, it's ongoing. But that traffic impact analysis indicated that it build out. This project would generate 1,316 daily trip ends, 75 in the AM peak hours and 113 in the PM peak hours. Site access would continue to be from University Drive, but also from the extension of Mendocino, as I indicated earlier. So that extension would be from about the Florentine intersection up to the intersection of Sheridan and Superstition. TIA also accounted for 847 dwelling units in Unit 20, and that currently generate approximately 7,200 daily trips, 521 during the AM peak, and approximately 740 during the PM peak or evening peak hours. It was also estimated in the traffic impact analysis that the extension of Mendocino Road would allow for approximately 46% of the persons residing in Unit 20 to utilize Mendocino as a southern access circulation route. The TIA is currently being reviewed by ADOT, Arizona Department of Transportation, by our own town engineer and traffic engineer. And there are still some finalization of that traffic impact analysis that need to occur. Once final, the TIA will include a determination of the impacts on State Route 69 and any required improvements to State Route 69 at that intersection. If a traffic signal is warranted and found to be required for the project, it has actually had subsurface preparation done by ADOT previously. At the same time that the developer-owner obtains sufficient state trust land from the Arizona State Land Department for the Mendocino extension, it will also obtain an interest in sufficient land for that second emergency access, as I pointed out to you. The developer-owner will also share the cost of a new 12-inch water line, which will loop into Unit 20 and help provide a loop system that ensures water, not only for this project, but a secondary backup water system for Unit 20. In accordance with our town requirements, a series of neighborhood meetings were held, actually, three neighborhood meetings. The first on June 6th, the second, I'm sorry, the first on April 25th, 2023, the second on June 6th, 2023, and the third on November 30th, 2023. The first meeting was onsite at the university building, and the anticipated turnout exceeded the capacity of the building, so the meeting was canceled. It was rescheduled here at the library. It was an overflow crowd, more than a hundred people, at the second meeting on June 6th. The November 30th meeting was well-attended, again, had well over 100 attendees. And in the course of this process, as well as the formal citizen review process that's required, staff received numerous emails of opposition to the project. There were also several letters and emails in favor of the project. Overwhelmingly, though, I must admit, the opposition was greater than the support for the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on February 12th, 2024, on this project. At that time, staff was basing their approval on general plan consistency. And there's several goals and policies that are listed in your staff report. I won't go through all of them, I'll just highlight them if that's okay, and I'll be glad to answer questions. But in it, it talks, Goal HA, which is in the housing element. It talks about promote development of a variety of housing types. Within the goal, or the policy of that goal, it talks about senior apartments. So this is well in line with our general plan. In addition, Goal HC1 encourages housing developments that utilize existing capacities and infrastructure. As I mentioned earlier, the infrastructure has been routed to this property, water, sewer, and also the roadway itself. And that goal, or that policy, HC1.1, states, "Support development that is located adjacent to or in close proximity to existing utility and roadway infrastructure." In addition, Goal ED, out of the economic development element of the general plan, Goal ED 8.3 states that they would like to foster a strong and diverse economy that provides a full range of employment and economic activities. So the policy that goes with that, ED 8.3.2, says, "Encourage investment in the development, redevelopment, rehabilitation, and adaptive reuse of urban land and buildings for employment and housing opportunities." After a hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, quite lengthy, about three hours in length, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6-1 to forward their recommendation of approval to town council. In addition, at that time, they also voted 6-1 to forward the required preliminary development plan that would move forward if approved to town council as a final development plan. There are several conditions that are listed in your staff report, as well as the ordinance, that talk about things that the developer will be required to do to move this project forward. They include the water line, they include the street, they include improvements and things of that nature. I won't go into each and every one of them, but suffice it to say that there's also a proviso in the ordinance that says, "In the event of noncompliance with any of the conditions included, the zoning designation to the described property would revert from the RSPAD that's being requested back to the original PLPAD, Public Lands Planned Area Development, in accordance with state law." I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time. I would specifically defer to the town engineer, who is here, on any traffic or traffic impact analysis-related questions. And with that, I will let you know that the applicant is here with his staff, with his team. They would like to do a presentation as well. So we'll leave it to your discretion as to whether you want to ask questions now. Wait till the applicant does their presentation. These are just, this is the existing building onsite. As you can see, it was a very nicely constructed and appointed building. There are other slides that indicate what the apartments at the site would look like. There's also some cottages that are being, that are being looked at and into being developed, as you can see from this site. And again, any questions, be glad to answer. And I would defer traffic and TIA to our town engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby. I'd like to welcome up the applicant, or the applicant's representative at this time, and we'll hear from them. Welcome, sir. I ask that the audience, if we can just bring from just speaking out during any of the presentations or any of the speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Stephen Polk. I'm the attorney for the project applicant, Platinum Realty Services, and Richard Whitney, Boyle Petroge Law Firm, 125 North Granite Street, Prescott, Arizona. I'm also the fourth generation of Polks to live in Yawapai County. And that makes my two-year-old son and my eight-week-old daughter the fifth generation to live here in Yawapai County. And what I'll tell you is, we've seen remarkable change while we've been here. And I can tell you that Prescott Valley is a better place today than it was when I was a kid. And that's thanks to the foresight and planning of you and your predecessors on the council. And what that speaks to is what responsible growth is really what this is about. And what that speaks to is what responsible growth is really what this is about. We need solutions that are sensible for the community, that work for the community, and that help us grow and continue to evolve. And I truly believe this project is a sensible, responsible project that will benefit the community. With me is Richard Whitney in Platinum Realty Services. He has 25 years in development. He's developed the Riverfront Commons in Cottonwood, Dunkin' Donuts in New York City, or New York, rather, a first light solar project, 400 central residences, that's in Florida, a 180-room Marriott mixed-use development in New York. He's developed six pharmacies, including five CVSs and one Eckerd Drugs, and two Hannaford supermarkets. Then also on the project team, we have Doug Stroh. He is a longtime, well-renowned architect here locally. And when I say longtime, when I was eight years old, he was my hockey coach. So very well-renowned and excellent architect. Also on the team, oh, I got a slideshow. Also on the team, we have Pender Engineering. Here to present today is Jesse Dowling. With that, you will hear from him. He'll speak to traffic and some engineering concepts. For water, we have Matrix New World Engineering, Dylan Easthouse is here. I'm not presenting, I'm not planning on having him come up specifically, but he's available to answer any questions that council might have on water-related issues for the project. And then we have me with legal. So, Mr. Mayor, you know, council members are free to ask questions anytime. I might suggest letting myself and Doug Stroh, Richard Whitney, and Jesse Dowling present, and then take questions at that time. Let's see. All right, so real briefly, this is the site overview. You can see it, it's off to the southeast here of Superstition Hills or Unit 20 here. I think Ernest covered the history nicely, I'm happy to go over that with you. I did want to show you this slide. So this is the master plan for NCU University. And what you see on this is that the master plan called for three additional buildings. There's going to be another 234,000 square feet of building space. There are going to be three parking structures that was going to have a capacity of 1,220 parking spaces. That's a four-level, if you look on the north end, that's overlooking the Superstition Hills community, that was a four-level parking structure that was planned there. There's additional Oz Street parking also planned. And then if you see, this is just the satellite overlay of what it looks like right now. And so you can see how, why the footprint of the property was laid out this way with the pavement, and that's because the master plan eventually called for these additional buildings and over 1,200 more parking spaces. So the property is currently zoned, a public land zoning designation. As you know, that doesn't mean that the property is owned by the public or owned by the town of Prescott Valley or the state Arizona. What that zoning designation means is that it's specified for uses such as allowed uses there, so it's privately-owned property. But it allows schools and universities, it allows dormitories, residence halls, fraternity and sorority houses, graduate student apartments, summer housing, and related housing type uses as part of a university or school campus. It also allows hospitals and medical campuses, that would include long-term care facilities, assisted living, hospice residences, transitional housing for patients, skilled nursing facilities. Again, there's a lot of housing type uses that could be built out here as part of a hospital campus. And so one of the points I'm trying to make here is, what we're proposing is transitional senior living. It allows you to move in there while you're still active and able to care for yourself. And as you need to move up into a higher level of care, you get to stay in your community and where you're used to staying, and you get that higher level of care. And I'll tell you what the studies show is that transitional living communities actually, because of the format of it, you're able to have fewer healthcare workers support, really our elderly as they get older, than if you're living, you know, just in traditional housing. Let's see, so currently, the current vested rights, so if a university, hospital, or anything that would come in that's allowed under public land zoning designation, if they were to come in and buy this property and redevelop it, here's what those current rights allow, and there'd be no input or ability for the town to receive some sort of community accommodations or things that benefit the community. So the town's legally required, they'd be legally required to provide the water. There's no obligation for that school or university or hospital to purchase, recharge water credits to recharge your aquifer. There'd be no obligation to construct a road extension. Here, we're proposing the Mendocino Road Extension that would go from Sheridan all the way down to Mendocino to alleviate some traffic concerns. There's no voluntary payment to the Humboldt Unified School District. There's no 10-foot-wide multi-use path, and that'll go along the Mendocino Road Extension. And there's no 12-inch water line benefiting the Superstition Hills community. I think because Ernest maybe wasn't, didn't present specifically on that, I'll go over that. So a couple of the things that the zoning ordinance that you're being asked to approve today will require of the developer, of Mr. Whitney here, is first, construct the Mendocino Road Extension. He'll have to complete that at his cost. And then if the traffic, if ADOT requires traffic improvements at Highway 69, he'll have to put those in as well. Along with that Mendocino Road Extension, along the side of that, there'll be a 12-foot-wide, or excuse me, a 10-foot-wide multi-use path. That'll be some sort of blacktop asphalt-type surface. That's consistent with the town's pedestrian and bicycle traffic planning, where you want to add more connectivity. And so this is actually, this is a new requirement, this didn't come up in planning and zoning, it was part of a really robust conversation with town staff. So there's 10-foot-wide multi-use path, same with a 12-inch water line, that'll also go all the way up Mendocino Road Extension. And that ties in, and really that's something the town's been wanting for quite a while to add redundancy. They'll add water redundancy to this proposed project, but it'll also add redundancy to the southern half of Unit 20, which currently doesn't have that type of redundancy. I do have, I've corrected the project narrative, but my initial project narrative, I want to be clear on this, it did have an incorrect typo on water. I know water is an important topic for the community. And so my initial project narrative incorrectly stated that the project will operate on a net-zero impact basis on the aquifer. And that's not true. That's all homes consume groundwater. This project is purchasing wastewater credits, that's through the Water Asset Management, that's the entity that the town has worked with for this effluent recharge. What I can tell you is the use of wastewater credits is one of the most responsible ways to support new development. And with this purchase, the town is legally obligated to recharge the aquifer for the full amount of the water demand of our project. I can also tell you, the town has the physical water availability, they have the water to provide for this project. That's something they're required to prove, that town staff certifies. I can tell you, this project complies with the town's water policies, and that includes the newly adopted Section 14-02-080, the non-subdivision water, residential water. And so I think a citizen spoke very eloquently on concerns about the loophole with rental communities. I'll tell you, that loophole was closed by your policy, that's, as you know, you're one of the leading community in the state of Arizona to address this problem on water. So that's, we're purchasing the full water for the property through these wastewater credits. All right, so these are, I want to be clear, these are changes from what we presented at planning and zoning. This was part of that really robust conversation with the town on what, they asked for some additional things. So one of them is this 10-foot-wide multi-use path along all Mendocino Road. So that'll add quite a bit of trails and tie into the rest of the community. But now, you can take your, you know, all the way up from the Superstition Hills community, you'll be able to, on a separate path, 10 feet wide, picture, you know, Scottsdale has the little greenbelt path, or I can picture in Telluride, they have the bike path along, you know, it's incredible for the community to get something like this. Additionally, there's this 12-inch water line along the Mendocino Road Extension. The zoning ordinance will say that the town will reimburse the developer for one-third of that cost, and the reasoning for that is, an 8-inch water line is really what would be required of our project if we were serving it just for ourselves. The town's asking to upsize that for Superstition Hills, to add that extra capacity. There's intersection improvements at Highway 69 and Mendocino, if ADOT requires that based on traffic study. And then two adjustments, there'll be no walking path improvements along University Drive. That's part of reviewing that with staff, the issue really came up that if you, the walking path itself, that it's already existing there, that's mostly in state land, that's not within the existing town right-of-way. And so instead of basically putting, you know, that's a fairly narrow right-of-way on University Drive that the town owns, and so instead of trying to put a walking path right along the side of University Drive, leave the existing walking path in place, and we're adding this new 10-foot-wide multi-use path along Mendocino, along the extension we'll build. And then no dog park, and that came up, really, that was same issue where their further study revealed that there's not enough space within the town land that's owned there. And then also, there were some concerns about town not having plans to maintain or, you know, basically be responsible for a dog park that could be turned over. So those two things are not part of the proposed zoning ordinance for approval today. Here in front of you, we have a traffic heat map, and I don't want to steal my traffic engineer's thunder on this, but yeah, there's two little arrows on the far-right side of this map. The one points out Unit 20, and then on the far, far-right side, you can just see where the 10,000 University Drive is. And really, the thing I want to point out to you on this is, there are really only two viable north-south roadways in Prescott Valley. And so, you know, as you know, to get from Unit 20, you come back in on Lakeshore and then down on Navajo or Robert Road, really. And so it really is a big benefit to the community to add in this Mendocino Road Extension. Here, I have just a little Google map showing it's a 22-minute walk from the site property to the intersection with Superstition, to the Sheridan and Superstition intersection. And that's just to highlight to you that this really is quite a bit away, you know, it's not directly on top of the Superstition Hills, that's a full 22-minute walk. I know some questions have come up about why senior transitional living, and the answer is, why we want to build this and why other people are building this. For example, Touchmark, I think they're adding something like, you know, something like 100 units right now. And it's, and they're looking, they're just looking at the demographics and what's going to happen to the overall age population of Yavapai County and our country as a whole. So this is the US Census Bureau projections. By 2030, from 2023 to 2030, the total population growth in the United States is only 1.4%. The total population growth, for the population over the age of 65, is 18.8%. And the total population growth for the 75-plus community will be 30.6%. And so that's why, you know, we need to have housing solutions for our seniors. And I would even argue, as a community, you know, we have a responsibility to take care for our elderly. And so this is a future planning project that will add housing for our seniors. This is the second slide, this is from a LCS Future Senior Living White Paper that recently came out, I think that was February of this year. And basically, it says, "The age 75-plus population in the United States is going to nearly double by 2060." And on the right, you can see a chart that shows about, right now at the bottom of this, 11 million males and 15 million females over the age of 75. And by 2060, those members will be 22 million and 28 million, respectively. Another question came up in planning and zoning about, you know, how do we define a senior transitional living community? And so what the zoning ordinance you're being asked to approve today is, and what this community will be, is we'll comply, there's a federal law, it's called the Housing for Older Persons Act of 1995, or it's called HOPA. It's an amendment to the Fair Housing Act. And what it says is, there's two ways to comply with HOPA, and if you do this, then you're exempt from those discrimination laws that says, you're not allowed to discriminate with respect to housing. And so that's how you have age 55-plus communities or age 62-plus communities. And essentially, those requirements are, for a 55-plus community, at least 80% of occupied units have to be occupied by a person 55 years or older. You could have a spouse who's younger than that. And that 80% rule, that's in place to allow for things like, you move in there with your spouse who's older, he dies, and then you're not forced to move out. So that's why this federal law has a little bit of flexibility built into that. And then there's a 62-plus set of rules too for HOPA as well. And so what zoning ordinance and what this community will be is, it'll comply with the Housing for Older Persons Act. So in summary, this project, it's a senior living community, it's similar to the allowed uses that exist already. When you think about housing, resident, excuse me, some university or school uses that could come in and put in dorm rooms and have students, or medical and hospital uses, where you could put in housing type uses for hospitals. This project is lower impact than the alternatives, I would say, when you think about that. There are some pretty significant community accommodations in terms of making the Mendocino Road Extension, adding the walking path. The developer's making a voluntary donation to Humboldt Unified School District, consistent with kind of current practices with that. And then, and then last thing I'll just say is, this is a sensible and responsible development. And so I would urge you to approve the zoning ordinance tonight. And with that, I will turn it over to our project architect, Doug Stroh, for a more in-depth discussion on the project design. And without stealing his thunder, I will say that, you know, the final design, that's not up for, that's not up for today, but it is an iterative process. I think it was, a citizen commented on concerns on kitchen amenities, and that's something that's certainly being looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Doug Stroh. My address is 1577 Plaza West Drive in Prescott, Arizona. And I wanted to kind of be a little redundant on the vicinity map, but there's a couple things I wanted to point out. You can see our development in purple, and there is two roads that lead to it, the existing university street, and then right below that is the emergency access road that your fire department approved. We have the extension of Mendocino from university down to Florentine. And then on the east side of that new extension will be the 10-foot-wide community pathway for bicycling, walking, walking your dogs, et cetera. And that'll probably be the right-of-way where the new water line will be installed also. So wanted to point out that it's the developer's intent to require all employees and deliveries to access the site via Mendocino from the south. And the only exception would be any employees that live in Unit 20, obviously. All of our buildings are sprinkled, all of our buildings meet the urban wildland requirements, which means all the exterior of all of our buildings are fireproof. And so it's, that's important, you know, they don't burn, and that's a positive thing. The closest distance between our project and Unit 20, with the exception of the two or three houses down the hill from us, is about 1,200 feet, so it's about four football fields away from the closest house. This is a site plan, landscaping plan, combination plan, and our total property area is 49.31 acres. And the developed land, the land that we're touching with roads and sidewalks and buildings is a total of 10.8 acres. So we have open space of 38.5 acres that surrounds our development. So it's going to be wide open for the pronghorns or anybody to walk by it, it's not going to shut off anything like that. We will have a six-foot wrought iron fence around the buildings, but everything outside that, the 38 acres, will be left natural. that, the thirty-eight acres, will be left natural. The indigenous contours and there are six peninsulas kind of drove my design. I wanted to work with the site. I wanted to minimize any mass grading. It's not going to look like eighty-nine A. And so we're only going to touch the land that we're going to use. All the rest of it, as you can see, that's not in color, is going to be left natural. We do have a few geybeyond retaining walls in a couple places that'll be stepping down and will be landscaped. The, all the landscaping meets city criteria. And we've been working with our landscape architect, and it'll all be drip irrigated.
Excuse me. Those of you who feel that it's necessary to have an additional conversation, if you wouldn't mind taking your conversation out into the lobby and allow Mr. Stroh to speak without any interruption. Thank you.
Thank you. All of our landscaping meets the town's low-water-use plants. We're going to have, everything will be drip-irrigated. And it'll be a smart controller system that measures the moisture in the ground. It shuts off if it's raining, so it's a kind of a computerized watering system. So it'll use the least amount of water. And of course, as the plants mature, they'll require less and less water because they'll send down their more roots. Probably two-thirds of the trees will be deciduous trees. We're hoping that most of those will be a type of fruit tree, apple trees, peach trees. And so in the summer, of course, it'll provide nice shade. They'll turn colors in the fall, and they'll allow the sun to come in in the winter. And, you know, after a few years, the residents will hopefully be able to enjoy the fruit. So the project also has a freestanding restaurant at the very east end of it. You can see that up there in the northeast corner. And it will be open to the public. And it'll be very dynamic panoramic views of the Mingus Mountains and the herds of antelope down below. The architectural design is, this project's really a good example of adaptive reuse. We're taking a really stellar, I'd call it a Class A building. I mean, it is, it is solid, and it is, you know, fireproof. And I like the architecture, so we kind of tied in the new apartment buildings to the same architecture, the same design motifs, masonry. And I think it'll work out very nicely. It's a very complimentary addition. All of the, you can see those horizontal bands. Those are actually enclosed corridors, so people can traverse the site without ever having to go outside. You can go from the pool, you know, all the way into the main building. So regardless of the weather, that'll be very nice. The cottages are more of a contemporary feel. We'll get to that, I guess. But anyway, here's the kind of a view looking into the courtyard between the two apartment buildings. And the bottom one is looking west, so that's the enclosed corridor that brings you back into the main building. The total project has forty-one large cottages that have about ten ninety-five square feet, a thousand ninety-five. The forty-two small cottages are nine-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet livable. And the row houses are seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet each. The one-bedroom apartments are nine-hundred-and-twenty square feet. The two-bedroom apartments are one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-five square feet. And of course, the memory care units are small, like a hospital room. And the one-bedroom units in the main building, nine-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet. And there are two two-bedroom units in the main building at eleven-hundred square feet, so two-hundred-and-fifty-nine units in total. The community, as I mentioned, has a indoor-outdoor pool. The pool will be, the pool's at the very west end of the two apartments. And it'll have garage doors that'll open up in the summer, so it'll be like an outdoor pool with just a shade lid on it. In the winter, that'll be closed, and the water in the building will be heated. So swimming exercises and aerobics are very important for seniors. So the community commons is found in the lower level, the first level of the existing building. And so far, we have designed in that area, it'll include a dining room, an exterior patio for dining, or just fireside chats, a library, living room, game room, theater with a stage, salon, physical therapy, and the fitness room, and of course, the administration. So that concludes my oversight of this project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, if you would just hold off, sir, I'd like to break it up a little bit. Let's hear from the public, hear what they have to say.
Alicia Doherty?
Welcome, ma'am.
You should each have a copy of my remarks. Time limits has me starting on my second paragraph. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alicia Doherty. I come tonight for concern on a development plan for University Drive. University Drive is directly across my street, Sheridan Lane. Only Superstition Drive separates the two streets with a stop sign at the crossroads. Sheridan Lane is a feeder street for thirteen other neighborhood streets. It is the only ingress and egress for two-hundred-and-twenty-two homes. There is also ninety-one homes on Sheridan Lane, bringing the total to three-hundred-and-thirteen homes that use Sheridan Lane to get in and out of our Superstition Hills neighborhood. Therefore, Sheridan Lane has above-average cars traveling on it. Sheridan Lane is a narrow, winding road with no sidewalks. Not only do our neighborhood cars travel on it, but also many pedestrians use it for walking and also walking their dogs. For these neighbors, it is the only route to get to our neighborhood park, George Anderson Park. This considered development plans a road from Mendocino, a semi-industrial commercial park of Prescott Valley, all the way to Superstition and Sheridan Lane. It will be a shortcut for commercial traffic going back and forth to Fane Road. It will also be a shortcut for the residents who will rent the ninety, they said eighty-three, homes planned on a development and the residence of the two-four-story apartment buildings. The developers have large parking structures in their plans, so they are planning to have a lot of cars there. Our town does not have much in mass transit. I feel this increased traffic from outside our neighborhood will negatively impact our property values, we who are tax-paying constituents. And it also carries safety issues for the pedestrians who walk. Please give careful thought and concern now, so in the future, there are no driving accident and walkers getting hit by the increase of traffic from this development. Thank you.
You can call just two at a time, please.
Okay. Michael Doherty and Keith Block.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. My name is Michael Doherty. I've been a resident of Prescott Valley for over forty years, and the last twenty-seven years in one of the oldest and, to this point, one of the nicest neighborhoods in Prescott Valley, Superstition Hills. I'm also a graduate of the Prescott Valley Citizens Academy, an incredible program that maybe even a number of your councilpeople have graduated from. I had an opportunity to observe and witness the quality city employees who were committed to maintaining and improving the quality of life in Prescott Valley. And I've experienced that. And I think, my wife just indicated, there are some issues that a number of residents in Superstition Hills neighborhood have regarding this changing of the planning and zoning category. But the biggest issue is the connecting road from Mendocino to, basically Sheridan Drive, which is going to be all the way down to Lake Shore and to Fane Road. And it was presented by the developer as an asset to the community, but it's certainly not an asset to this neighborhood. It's the only other two, you've got Roberts and you've got Navajo, but they were designed to be connectors all the way through. And they have sidewalks, or they have four-lane highways. This is a two-lane windy road, has been indicated, and presents a significant danger to pedestrians walking their dogs. So it's something that I hope the councilpeople, who, I want to take this opportunity, I've got forty-five seconds left, to express my appreciation for your willingness to make the effort and give the time to maintain and improve the quality of life in Prescott Valley. And for that, I'm grateful. And I hope you take into consideration the impact of the quality of life for the residents and your constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Keith Block. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you, people from Prescott Valley, for showing up tonight. Okay. I don't really see how this is beneficial, this development is beneficial to Prescott Valley, especially Superstition Hills United has been informed by the senior community, the senior community, that it's just going to start at fifty-eight-hundred a month. Who in Prescott Valley can afford this? Who in Superstition Hills can afford this? How is this beneficial to Prescott Valley? Once this development is built, that will be the end of the antelope. I lived there. I used to see her, I've lived there for fourteen years now. I used to see herds of antelope out there. I don't see them there anymore. Maybe it does, and maybe six. Once development starts, I believe that word gets out in the antelope community, and they don't want to hang around there anymore. Also, the restaurant that's going to be at the end, this is going to be a public restaurant. I'm wondering how many people are in Prescott Valley are going to be, let's go out and eat at the old folks' home tonight. I just don't see, I just don't see that as popular. Also, you know, as you drive into Superstition Hills, there are no restaurants. There are no eighty-thousand-square-foot apartment, four-story apartment buildings. Just single-family homes. It's a residential community. That's the reason why we moved in there. We don't want, we don't want a road from a commercial area, which is going to be Valley Road, dumping into Sheridan Lane. That's going to bring commercial traffic. That's going to be a shortcut out to Fane Road. And I don't see how anybody's going to police that, or how Mr. Whitney's going to police people coming in from Valley Road, the commercial vehicles, to his building site. Who's going to police that? Anybody's going to come in whatever is the shortest way, or whatever way Google Map tells you. Also, in two thousand and eleven, then-Mayor Skog and Councilmember Laura Lee Nye promised us, we gave those people our word when we put that restrictive zoning in. And she was talking about the NCU development. That was on February third of, February third of two thousand and eleven. I saved that. I can show it to anybody if you want to see that newspaper article. Something we never wanted to begin with, because deep down, we all knew this was coming tonight. So councilmembers, are you going to honor that promise tonight and double down on the promise that Laura Lee gave us twelve years ago? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tomas Montoya and Tasha Taylor?
Welcome, sir. Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Tomas Montoya. I am reading a letter on behalf of Terry Hancock, who lives in the Superstition Hills community. Thank you for your consideration. I am writing this memo in support of North Central AZ Senior Living Community. My husband and I located here over five years ago with a job transfer and located in the Superstition Hills area. When I was made aware of the facility being considered, I attended two of the meetings. The reason I was interested was that my husband and I have now turned sixty-five and retired. As we look forward to retirement here in Prescott Valley, there's also the reality that at some point, we will need to move into housing that will give us a comfortable space without all the expenses of taking care of a home. At the meetings, I found the Superstition Hills United residents to be taking a very short-term view of absolutely no development under any circumstances, without giving any consideration to the project itself or the opportunities it may present. I truly believe that this project will fill a community need for senior transitional living. They seem to focus only on the negative impacts without the positive aspects of this senior living. I have found that representatives who conduct the meetings have done their due diligence in the presentations, explaining the process, the impact studies regarding traffic, water, and wildlife. At the last meeting, residents brought up another entry to the property. The developer has gone back to ADOT, and now there will be a secondary entry to the property. This developer is listening, making adjustments, and going the extra mile to ensure and minimize the impacts to the surrounding area. I want to correctly speak to some of the items that residents brought up. Number one, Maricopa housing permits. A resident noted that Governor Hobbs has stopped building due to water concerns. The correct information in my review was that she only noted that new construction would continue in major cities of Phoenix, and some outlying areas would not be given new permits. New home construction will continue, and the state will put the brakes on areas surrounding Phoenix. In two thousand and twenty-two, over thirty-one thousand single-home permits were issued, and over ten thousand apartment permits were issued. The building continues steadily. I drive to North Scottsdale every month to visit my mother, and the building is from I- seventeen, excuse me, to Scottsdale and Highway one oh one. Second issue, wildlife concerns. Some residents, as you just heard, spoke on concerns for the antelope. I've seen very few antelopes in recent years, and not sure what other wildlife besides the antelopes is around. The development is very few acres, and there are hundreds of open space. Traffic. This is a senior living facility. Very many residents are likely not going to be driving, and there's going to be many amenities, the Yav Bus and other bus facilities on-site that may transport senior residents. They're senior residents. There's likely not going to be the amount of traffic expected. Water is a concern, but the water geological rep gave a nice presentation.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Tasha Taylor. I am actually reading a letter from Laura Lee Nye. She was unable to be here tonight. I am writing in support of this new zoning change. Please allow me to share that I was a resident of Prescott Valley and had the pleasure of serving on the town council for seventeen and a half years. I also served multiple terms as Vice Mayor. It has been noted that I did not support a zoning change in two thousand and eleven that did not meet the needs of the Superstition Hills community at that time. That is factual. However, the need for more diverse housing opportunities for seniors... However, the need for more diverse housing opportunities for seniors in 2024 is urgent and undeniable. I lived on Tonopah Drive in Superstition Hills from August 1999 until October of 2023. I currently live in an independent living apartment in Peoria, Arizona. I cannot help but wonder, if this opportunity had been available to me, would I still be residing in the Superstition Hills neighborhood in the coming years? This developer has agreed to make infrastructure changes that are significant and will alleviate the concerns of current residents. To have a well-thought-out facility for seniors in such a safe and desirable location seems to me a very positive decision for the community. Respectfully submitted, Laura Lee Nye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jeanette DeFrancesco and Randy Bosberg. So then Randy Bosberg, Tom Steele.
Welcome, sir.
My name's Randy Bosberg. I've been a resident of Prescott Valley for over 20 years. A couple of things I wanted to mention on this 55 senior community is, first of all, from what I gather, the rents are well over $4,000 for the non-assisted living, and I don't know too many people in this town that can afford that. But the next question I have is the medical personnel, nurses and such, we have a shortage currently. And where are they going to get these? With the Planning and Zoning Committee, they were talking about, they sent letters out, still haven't come up with any companies or organizations that would supply the medical care, nursing care. It was mentioned that maybe they could use some nursing students and use them in the, on the job training program. My question to that is, is, well, where are they going to get the licensed nurses or doctors to oversee these trainees? We still have the shortage. Then, in question two, extending Mendocino Drive, they're still working on approval from the state and ADOT, which I understand. But I was looking at Phase One, that says they're going to rework existing Mendocino Drive, widen it, put turning lanes in and everything, and I guess I have a question as to who's footing the bill for that widening and additional improvements. And then, as far as Mendocino, I live up in that area, and people from that community there, the university, they're going to use Superstition and go back out to either Navajo or Lakeshore to go shopping. You're not going to drive down to 69 and come all the way back around to go to Walmart. So I questioned, I questioned the need for that road, and something I just heard tonight is that you're running that extension through state land with a water line. I questioned the need for that. Is that just an opportunity, then, to start developing and improving those two sides of Mendocino on the state land? So, and I noticed that the town is going to reimburse the developer a third of the cost for the water line. So that being said, as a taxpayer of this town, I'm against using our tax dollars to subsidize the developers.
Mr. Steele.
Tom Steele and Danny Woodward.
I will be very brief. I've been a resident of Superstition Hills for 20 years, and I've had trouble with every mayor and council since I moved here. I just want to remind you six that you don't work for senior staff, you don't work for the developers, and you don't look for the, you don't work for the major landowner around here. You work for us. You work for me. You work for us. And our, and our community, and our community is what you should be concerned about, not the additional growth for taxes. And I know that towns and cities live off the taxes, right? And, but they never get cheaper per person. Why wouldn't a town twice as big as us have lower taxes because of the efficiency? It doesn't work that way. Also, crime rises 20% faster than population, and that's from a commander of the police, of Prescott Valley Police Department. So I encourage you to listen to the people here, because we're the ones that vote, and we're going to be very strongly walk, walking and, and working for getting people that will listen to us this year.
Sir, you up?
Good evening, council. Hello, neighbors. My name is Daniel Woodward. I reside at 417 North Kearney Drive with my wife and daughter. Regarding this project, I am in opposition mainly of the road connecting Mendocino to Sheridan Lane. Ideally, Enterprise Parkway would connect to the property, but would support. I'm still going to show that again here. Ideally, Enterprise Parkway would be the connector right to the property. But I know this is expensive. It's probably not going to happen, because everyone, you know, everyone's cheating and cut corners. But there's really no reason that we can't go from Mendocino and basically angle over right to the fence line where university is, where the entrance is. So Mendocino Sheridan, personally, pros, I don't see any, cons, I see a few. Direct access to Sheridan would cause usage not related to the development. It'd be useful commuting, like the guys previously said. The speeding issue's out of control. Superstition, it's an absolute nightmare. I can't believe it's, it's a drag strip. I didn't, no idea. It's going to be an issue, a straight shot south, it's going to be loud exhaust on a straight road southbound. It's going to cause noise pollution. It's going to, that exhaust can be directed straight into our neighborhood. Northbound traffic that misses the university turn would make U-turns at the Sheridan intersection or in our driveways. Mendocino has a very steep, dangerous hill, even though traffic control would be installed, adding more congested highway traffic. The heavy equipment will be more prone to brake failures at a steep decline, even in 2024. Right-hand turns on the highway are dangerous and require kind of heavier than normal acceleration. And I don't know many elderly people that hammer down when they take a right turn. It's dangerous for westbound highway traffic. There's a, there's a K-12 school right off Mendocino. I haven't heard anyone besides myself bring this up. This equipment, driving up and down the road, it's going to tear up the road, but, worse than, it's going to cause severe safety issues. Kids getting picked up by their parents, the congestion, it's going to be a nightmare there. Elderly, they're going to increase the risk of accidents while trying to break at the highway. The red light isn't a barricade. Mendocino to the property line, university, just, without going straight into our neighborhood, just seems like the way to go. You know, just keep it out of our face, and I think we can figure out a way to get along if we did that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
No one else, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Polk, we'll continue with your team. Whoever else is next. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. I'm Jesse Dowling with Pender Engineering. I've been a resident of Arizona, born and raised in Jerome, so I've been here my whole 52 years. We were brought in to help with the, with the traffic on this project, and also the water and wastewater and engineering. The trip generation for this traffic was based upon ITE, or the International Transportation Code, land use designations. It'll have a mix of assisted living, oh, I forgot it's down here, assisted living, senior adult housing, both single and multifamily styles, and a fine dining restaurant establishment. All of these are at or near the lowest possible use, trip generating use cases that you can find in one of those manuals or designs. Based upon the neighborhood and town feedback, we have started to work on the process, as was mentioned, with the Arizona State Lands Department, to extend Mendocino. Now, again, it's kind of a, it's a tricky thing for us, because we're adding Mendocino to satisfy some folks that were worried about traffic, but now we've kind of angered some folks that they're worried about the traffic. But we have, we have studied this extensively and exhaustively. We are now our third iteration and version of the traffic, traffic impact analysis. The initial version showed that the traffic impact from this development was so minimal that it actually made my traffic engineer pull the rest of his hair out, because he had a hard time making enough traffic to make a report. However, we know that there's still an increase, so we're going to follow through on that. We are looking at adding that roadway in. That is sort of in a pattern right now of working with approvals from ADOT and with the town, lots of Ts to dot and Is to cross. We also will be adding in the secondary emergency access road, as approved by CAFMA, and the road right-ofways will be dedicated back to the town with the roadway being, and the water line being paid for by the developer. The extension, I covered that one kind of already, apologies. With ADOT, there is already a subgrade infrastructure in place for that intersection. That was kind of, when we were looking at it, I drove by it one day and said, wait a minute, they're planning for a light here at some point. That may be the case, that this development will inspire that to be constructed. It's rather highly unlikely. It is highly possible that it might just end up being a right-turn lane and turning the regular lane that's there into what they call a captured left turn. That intersection is historically bad as far as it, as the levels of service. They usually rate the levels of service for traffic as you would your scorecard from, from your child's school with an A through F. That is currently an F designation, because it just takes so long to get out of it, because there's no traffic control. That will probably remain that way until we get through with this project. We feel we can probably get that up to a level of service that is acceptable for ADOT, and we are working with them, hand in, hand in glove with your town engineering staff as well. For the drainage, it's a, it's pretty basic. We're going to use the existing facilities on the site that have been accommodating that drainage. We're going to probably go in and clean them up, upsize them, and clear them, and, and clear them out and bring them up to standard for current requirements, because they are a bit old now. We're also going to be integrating some things like a rainwater capture that will be used to assist in, in watering the orchard trees that are going to be on the site. And, and we're also looking at, there was another comment about the property directly to the north and west of our site, they actually just touched by a corner. There has been mention of some drainage issues on that, that site. Even though our property, we couldn't fix that issue by grading outside of our property, it's not allowed. As the rule is for engineers, you have to maintain the flows from the property at historic levels, both in and out. We have, however, gone above and looked at adding a swale. There's a little tiny squiggle up at that corner, so we've looked at trying to capture as much water as possible, redirect that around the hill from that person that was having the flow issues, and get it back out onto the state trust land where it can kind of dissipate and flow over the hill on its own. So that, that's kind of the short version of the engineering and drainage, and I don't want to drive, drive it too far down the road, but I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Polk?
Last supporting comments by Richard Whitney.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you, residents, for listening to us and letting us present our project. I was going to come up and talk about our vision. We've seen our vision. We are, we are looking to build a resort-style senior living community, be 55 and over. It will start, majority of the people moving in at that point will be independent. We will look to take care of them for the remainder of their life, if they wish, moving into assisted living if needed, and memory care if needed. We have listened to the community the best that we can. We have met with the community a number of times. Outside the three meetings that we had, we did meet with some of the leaders of the superstitionhills.org, I hope I said that right, and listened and tried to understand what their concerns were. And we do understand what their concerns are. That's why we decided to bring in Mendocino Extension, from, bringing it from the south to the north, to bring, bring that, take that traffic out of the neighborhood. We've listened to the town ask about a water line, and we decided to bring in a, a water line along the Mendocino Extension. We are also bringing in a 10-foot trail, walking path, which the, which the town suggested that they liked. So we're going to run that along Mendocino, which would be, which would be multipurpose, it'd be good for hiking, biking, running, jogging, walking your dog. And Mendocino will be fenced on both sides, because we are not looking to develop that land, and I don't know if anybody else will look to develop that land, but at this point, there will be, there's wildlife and there's cattle there, and if, so Mendocino will be fenced on both sides, so that it'll be difficult for cattle or wildlife to cross the road and cause any concerns. All we're looking to do is enhance a property that has, has fallen into deterioration. It is a beautiful property and a beautiful building, but unfortunately, it has been vandalized extensively. There is tremendous amount of, of damage inside that building. Windows are broken out of, the, the elevators were pried open. God forbid if somebody is in that building, breaks into that building, and somebody gets hurt, I think this whole community will be in an uproar why that building is sitting there vacant. The building is sitting vacant because our, our world has changed. Office buildings are no, you can, you can go on the news, office buildings are vacant all across this country. I get, every day I get emails from Phoenix about all these big, beautiful office buildings in downtown Phoenix that are just vacant, and are losing vacancies. Schools are downsizing. The zoning, the way it is currently, is currently, is obsolete to the way that our current world is today. Our population is growing older. You've seen this, Stevens showed you the statistics of where we're going. We need to be able to house our seniors, take care of our seniors. This community will be a resort-style, market-rate community that will have tremendous amount of activities, amenities for the, for the community, for the residents of this community to enjoy and live out there, live the remainder of their lives in their forever home. And that's what we are looking to provide, this, the service for this community. We, there was talks about numbers. We have done our numbers. The ones that have been quoted here are not accurate. We are going to be less than that, our starting numbers will be. We don't actually know where our finished numbers will be, because again, the market will dictate where we're going to be with our, with our rental numbers. We have made change, we have made changes to anything that we, you know, we've listened to the communities, we've made changes where we needed to. There's been a talk about kitchens. We have, we have, since we have heard about that from the community, we have researched it with our management company and other groups, and our assisted living will not have full kitchens anymore. They will be kitchenettes. That was, we always assume that, you know, assisted living, you can have a full kitchen, but we have since learned, and we are correcting that, our assisted living will have kitchenettes. Our memory care will be on a monitored floor, will have, every, every person in memory care will be, will have somebody with them, a healthcare worker with them at all times, that will not be able to leave the floor without a healthcare worker, but they will be able to leave with healthcare workers to help to take them around the grounds, take them outside, sit in the garden, do gardening, you know, and, and be in group activities. A lot of things, amazing, one of the most amazing things about these type of communities is the independent, when, as a community starts to, starts to grow, the independent, you know, people living there that are healthy and, and are, are able to, they want to work within the community. They want to, they want to volunteer to help people that need help. They want to, they want to have, you know, they want to help with, with social activities, and so these social communities grow within, within, like ukulele clubs or different kinds of clubs that will morph and... kinds of clubs that will morph and where organically grow because of this community. In closing, we are not looking to be a burden to Prescott Valley or to Superstition Hills. We are looking to add to these, to this community and to Superstition Hills. Our development is the least impactful that can come into this property. And this property is a private, is private property. It has already been developed. The infrastructure has already been there. The road is there and the building is there and that's not going away. And I don't see any schools or offices that have been knocking down the doors to move in there in the past six, seven years that it's been sitting vacant. If, if this project does not go through, that prop, that property is going to sit vacant for enough, for how many number of years? And the, the ownership of their property, if it's either us or the, the current owner, will have, have, they have rights to have that property, you know, filled. That's why, that's why they own it. It's why it's being owned. So on that note, I'm not that great of a speaker, so I apologize for that. But on that note, I'm very good at answering any of the questions that you may have and I'm willing to take them, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Polk, is there anything else?
Your Honor, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Ruby. I have a couple of questions. I'm sure the rest of the council do, so I'll just start it off. During the research and references, I tried to find out where else Prescott Valley has this same type of zoning. And I located up at Arizona Downs. And for those of you that are not familiar with it, it's at the old fairgrounds up on 89A. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the PL zoning is up there for the, the motorhomes? The motorhome park? The RV park, is that correct? So the PL zoning is up there, so that PL, they could have the same type of motorhomes or RVs or fifth wheels at this location?
I don't know the exact answer to that, Mr. Mayor. I can look into it and get back to you on that, but I believe that's correct.
Okay. So with that, staying along those lines, so could a school go in this location with the same exact layout as this project? And instead of it being senior homes, living or 55-plus living, it would be titled dormitories or student housing? Could that still apply? Would it be the same?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, yes, that would apply. And I believe, uh, Mr. Polk, uh, outlined that in his, in his presentation about an additional, I believe is 284,000 square feet that could go on that site as was previously approved for the university.
And the reason, okay, so the reason that we're here for this hearing is just because of the senior housing as opposed to student housing?
Correct, sir.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I have some questions for the traffic engineer, I think, or traffic engineer.
The town engineer, ma'am? Mr. Leach?
So have we looked at Sheridan Lane? There's been a lot of comments about not having sidewalks, it being a two-lane road. Have we looked at that?
Thank you, uh, Mayor, stepped aside, I guess, and Council. Uh, we've looked at it very briefly and it's one of the items that we've asked the consultant to take a look at. We've added some comments back to them. As Mr. Ruby identified, uh, the TIA is a, is a draft and we're working on finalizing the TIA and we've submitted comments to them to ask them to evaluate more things and that's one of those. We, we are looking at all the traffic distributions and the operations in the area.
So Gilbert, maybe this could be one of the streets that we add to that grant that I mentioned earlier for the safety action plan to look at, to see how we could plan a capital improvement project out there, maybe for a sidewalk or something in the future.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, certainly we can, it'll be part of an overall review of that area.
Sorry, Gilbert, go ahead.
Yes, we can certainly add that to the mix.
Thank you. And then, um, thank you. That was my questions for you. Can you enlighten me a little bit on this 12-inch water line and how it would benefit Superstition Hills? Or is that better for Steven? I don't know. Mr. Polk?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Council, I will attempt to that. Uh, right now, the Superstition Hills, uh, northern section, if you go northern half, it, it has a loop system. The southern half is single water line. This additional water line would not only serve this project, but would add a loop line so that the, uh, southern half of, of Superstition Hills would not be without water if there was something to happen to the existing water line.
Got it. So it's, uh, go ahead.
If I could add, yeah, I think there was a misstatement made, um, that this is actually benefiting the Superstition neighborhood because right now there is a dead end line. When we have to do maintenance or there's somehow a, a line is cut, they could be without water and it also affects fire flow. So this is an opportunity for the town to put some money in that actually is, the money is for Superstition Hills, not for this development.
Got it. Thank you. So that's great. And then, um, I understand, I've heard a lot of talk about the antelope and their location. And I was wondering, Fatima, if we could bring up an aerial, the one that had the aerial of the presentation, I think that Mr. Polk did. Oh, there we go. No, it, it was the one that showed more of the green space. Nope. I think it must've been in Mr. Polk's. Yep, the third one. So Ernest, I understand, I met with, uh, three residents and, and Mr. Reynolds twice. I understand that there is a really nice area out there with a waterfall and, uh, water feature out there. Can you point out or have any idea where that is?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I cannot, I don't, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. And I know, I know we have a resident, resident. Mr. Weber. But okay, sorry.
No, we're not going to have other public comments close, sorry.
Thank you. I just want to, I just want to make sure that that area is, remains untouched and that we don't impact that area at all. I appreciate, uh, when Mr. Whitney said that both sides of Mendocino was going to be fenced, although I don't see that in the condition, so I'm going to be adding that as a condition of approval. And my other question, I think, is for Mr. Polk. So Mr. Polk, um, in your presentation, you said that all of the existing uses were allowed in the current zoning. Why change a zone?
Vice Mayor, now the, uh, senior living housing transitional project, that's not allowed under current, the public land zoning.
So the cottages?
For 55-plus, no, not allowed in the current zoning, no.
Okay, got it. And then also, um, I want to bring to the attention of our residents that there's a 38,000 square foot health services campus going in, a Yavapai College, which Mr. Whitney will hopefully, uh, train and feed you some of the employees that you might be looking for. And that's imminent. Thank you to Mr. Dowdery for his Citizens Academy comments and for his staff comments. And then I have some conditions of approval that I want to question and perhaps add some. Is that okay to do that now?
Clear.
Okay. So, um, the certificate of assured water supply is a condition of approval and you guys agree to that, right? Because that's new in our town.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So you're going to show 100-year water supply for this project?
Uh, I want to be careful on this because the, uh, the certificate of 100-year water supply is typically required for, uh, single-family home developers. The new town code adopts the equivalency of that and will comply with that.
Okay, great. And then Ivan, on number four, where it says necessary submittals for the initial FDP within the subject property shall be submitted no later than one year after the effective date of this ordinance. Can we define what necessary submittals means? Because that's too vague for me.
Essentially in our town code, it says what you have to submit to start an FDP process.
What is that?
The various maps and the various information that you give about streets and sub, and improvements. It's set forth what, it lists in the town code what is required to be submitted to staff.
So I want to make sure that it's not just the Mendocino Road.
No, it won't just be the Mendocino Road.
So it's going to be something on the actual property that they would have to submit and turn a shovel?
Yeah, everything that would be required for an FDP application would be required based on that language.
But what about construction? Within a year to begin construction?
No, no, this is simply an application for a final development plan.
Okay. I think I have issue with that because I want to see that something's going to happen on this site and it's not going to stay undeveloped like the university did. That's why I guess I have a concern with necessary submittals. And then I'd like, I don't know, Mr. Polk, if you and Mr. Whitney will agree to, um, because we require that prior to phase one Mendocino Drive shall be improved, right?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Okay. So would you agree to construction traffic must use Mendocino Drive and not use? Yes, you're shaking your head? So no construction traffic whatsoever on the residential street? So that's a condition to add. And then also to add the fencing on both sides of Mendocino? And then you mentioned existing drainage that you need to clean out and, and upsize and all of that. I want to make sure because that's not going to be public. That's not going to be anything that our new staff is looking at, right, Gilbert? Because it's onsite.
What was the question?
So they, they talked about upscaling the drainage onsite, the existing facilities. Our staff isn't going to maintain that because it's onsite.
Anything onsite would be their responsibility.
Right. So I want to make sure that there's ongoing maintenance of that. And I don't know if that's something we can make a condition as well.
I would think that would, it would fall under just property maintenance. So anything with through our neighborhood services department, if, if the property owner is not maintaining that can be cited for, uh, whether it's obstructing, you know, drainage flows, weeds, you know, those types of trash, that type of stuff, we would be able to go on with code enforcement.
Okay. I don't know if you would agree to some sort of condition on that?
So on that, on that one, Vice Mayor, just thinking, the, the concern is, I think, maintaining drainage so it's not draining down onto, there's, there's a two or three properties right below there. And so I, I think going back to what town manager, uh, town manager Davidson said is existing town code, I think, covers that pretty well. One, and, and two, in terms of actually draining onto those properties, most of that drainage actually comes from farther to the east. The elevation's up a little higher as it, as it drains into that channel. So, uh, so I guess I'd just defer that back to town.
Got it. So then my conditions, uh, just to clarify that I would like added are, um, construction traffic only to be on Mendocino Drive, fencing of both sides of Mendocino and something for number four. I think the final development plan, because you guys have a final development plan pretty much, it's already done. So final development plan within a year, I want something more than that.
Mr. Whitney, can you please go to the microphone?
We are, we are currently scheduled, are for final development, we are currently scheduled for the first meeting of May, or we're looking to get on that meeting for, on that meeting. Hopefully we can get on that meeting and we don't have any, make any tweaks, but we basically have the final development plan completed, but we are making tweaks to it as we speak.
Right. So that to be done within a year is not satisfactory to me. It's already done. So something else has to be done within that year to show their due diligence of this project. Otherwise the project goes away in a year.
Clark, can you weigh in on this, please, and address what the Vice Mayor is trying to speak on?
Mr. Mayor, Council, the council, uh, can also put, uh, requirements of, uh, construction starting within a certain period of time, building permits being drawn and that sort of thing. The challenge is, is that if you set that too soon, then of course you're going to end up having to hold a hearing to decide whether the zoning is going to be revoked because it can't happen automatically. State law requires you to go through a, a process. I recall, uh, back in the nineties, when the council put some conditions like that on some zoning, we ended up having to consider the zoning three different times because the, uh, market had changed and the ability to do that. Simply they weren't able to pull the permits during the time that was set. And so staff initially, when they presented to the planning, his only commission thought that this one year of, of issuing a, a, a final development plan or, or requesting one was enough to make sure that they were going forward.
Vice Mayor, so I, I just want to be clear. So that condition of approval is, is we have to get approval of the final development plan within a year. So we don't have that today. We have to come back in front of council. You take another vote on that. So that, that's that current requirement. And then, um, Mr. Legler, correct me if I'm wrong, but within the condition of, if there's an approval of the final development plan, then I think that would be a position where you could put a requirement, turn a shovel, you know, start construction within a period of time, but.
So what would you agree to?
Yeah, yeah, so the, my personal concern about the timing and why a year feels very appropriate to me is the state land approval process, you know, it's kind of the state land department's notoriously slow. Uh, so I guess, uh, I'd request we leave that condition in place of one year and then think about making us turn a shovel relatively quickly after we get approval of the final development plan.
Else? Councilman Schumer?
I just wanted to make some comments as well. A lot of building also is also weather related. So it's whether or not you can turn a shovel and do things is also by weather. I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Whitney. I also know that you have fair housing issues you have to abide by. You have CAFMA and building department requirements that are in place that you have to abide by. And you have state laws and regulations to follow in order to make this plan come to fruition. It's a major deal. You've already had a lot of money invested just in development and deciding whether or not you can go forward with the project. You have to have funding in place in order to do a, a building project this size. There's over 313 homes in the development right next to you in which these people are being angry at you wanting to accomplish what your dream is. Well, that neighborhood didn't exist at one point and someone else on the other side of you was angry that there was going to be so much building going on in that development. So it's kind of a, a thing where people don't like change. You know, they, they don't want something in my backyard. It's called NIMBY, not in my backyard. The people that are angry about this are the ones that are closest to it. I look at this, I'm turning 65 this year and I think of my future. Now these younger people on the council, they're not thinking about being 65 yet, but I, I see the value in what it is you're trying to accomplish and I think that's an amazing thing. So I say thank you for choosing Prescott Valley for your dream. This is a beautiful building. I have not been inside. I heard from the prior town manager, Larry Tarkowski, about what a beautiful area it was. And he's been in the, inside and kept talking to me about the woodworking and how beautiful it was. It's sad to me that somebody has taken it upon themselves to vandalize that or change what is not theirs. So when somebody makes an investment in a property to fulfill a dream, there's a lot that goes into it to make it come to fruition. And so I thank you for your dream. It may not be something I could ever afford. I would like to think I could someday. We're not asking anybody else to move into this project. We're not asking anybody else to move into this project, but it has a need and it will be fulfilling a need for someone else who does want to live there, who does want an indoor/outdoor swimming pool to do, you know, water aerobics. I, at 65, if I were to live there, would not say I want to give up cooking. I think it's nice that you're offering kitchenettes or a kitchen area, and they're going to have, be able to have visitors there, so hopefully, family will come and visit, and maybe family wants to have a kitchenette so that they can have a sit-down dinner inside of an apartment. So I see the point of why people don't want something, but this is such a small thumbprint or a footprint to the area. When you look at this development right here, there's not going to be a lot of dust that everybody is all worried about, big, huge construction equipment, moving earth, because it's going up, it's going, it's going upright instead of outright. So if you look at the other development where your homes were built, there was a lot of land grading. There was a lot of things changing. I know I hear about this, about with the sidewalks and where people are walking. Well, are people walking on private property? Because if you are outside walking your dog along this area, you don't own this property. And if you want to keep it the way it is right now, it's been for sale for quite a while. People are allowed to buy it, pull your resources, and maybe come up with what you want to do. But if somebody is willing to do an investment into our community to make this come to fruition, I applaud you, sir.
Councilwoman?
I want to thank all of you for coming this evening. It is encouraging to know that you love our community this much, as much as the rest of us here on the council love our community as well. And we sacrifice a lot of time and energy and devotion, and we look into these things with a serious heart and not with faint of heart. We look at things that bring, that come before council and understanding that it affects everybody in our community. And I have met over, not just the last few weeks, but over the last year, I have met with many from our community, both pros and cons. I have read many, many emails. I have not attended those neighborhood meetings. Those are not meetings for the council to attend. Those are meetings for the neighborhood to attend. But I have read comments from those meetings. And I have, at one time, thought maybe this might not be a good use for this land. I have lived here, as you all well know, almost 30 years. I did work at Lockheed Martin and watched this. In 2005, I was working at Lockheed Martin and watched this building start being built. And the idea that there were going to be five or six buildings over there never came to fruition, only the main building. Had those buildings all come to fruition, had it been a university, I know it was online, but had it been dormitories, it would have been an altogether different scenario for your community in Unit 20 than it is today. And it would have been a lot more traffic, a lot more parties. I had some friends who lived on La Jolla, and I used to go there very often, and was invited to dinner there many times. And just down the road from there was a rental home, and there were five or six Embry-Riddle students living there. And they were partying night after night, and the noise and the traffic and the debris from those kids in just one home. And I, you know, I just cannot emphasize enough that had this ended up being a full university, that we would have seen traffic, we would have seen partying, we would have seen a lot more than what you are seeing today. And also, if we did convert it to, or if a school were to go up there as far as even a high school, you'd have a football field, you'd have stadium lights like they have over in Granville. And I don't know if you've been over there and seen how close some of those homes are to those, to those stadium lights, but I saw those stadium lights go up. I could see them clear to Highway 89A. And that you would never have been happy with, and the football games that went on for those, for that field. And also, if, another thing with schools are the school buses and the traffic that you would have to endure if it were a school. I mean, there are just all kinds of situations there where the traffic slows down to 15 miles an hour, and maybe you would appreciate that 15 miles per hour in your neighborhood. However, this would be going on every single day. And if you've seen the traffic at a lot of our elementary schools and our middle schools and parents picking them up, I mean, the lines are horrendous. If it were a church, say, for example, or even a park, we now have, we had to move our red, white, and boom, Fourth of July fireworks from Mountain Valley Park over to here, to the Civic Center because of the growth of our community and the popularity of this event. And this last year, and we had between 10,000 to 12,000 people enjoy the red, white, and boom. If you were to have that made into a park, it would be, possibly something like that would occur there, and you wouldn't be happy with that. Ask the neighbors who live on Lakeshore and the surrounding neighbors that had to endure people parking in their driveways and along their streets during the red, white, and during the Fourth of July celebration. It was, I walked there, I lived in that neighborhood, I've lived in the same house, it'll be 30 years, September, and I've walked to that park many, many times for various events. And I'll tell you, those neighbors are just as happy, unhappy about that situation as you are expressing this evening. I mean, we are growing, and as it was pointed out, our community is changing, and it's very difficult to swallow. I know how it was when I moved here in 94, with all the antelope and the deer used to look out toward Fane Road and see them play, that old song, the deer and the antelope played. I mean, it was beautiful. I mean, and fields of gorgeous wildflowers. Never, never again. It will never be, it was something that happened, it was a snapshot of time, and it's something you just have to hold dear in your heart and remember it and enjoy it for what it was. But for now, there's other things to enjoy, and this is something that there is a need for. And as was expressed by a couple of people here this evening, letters that were read by individuals that would enjoy this and use this facility. And I'm of that age as well, that it might be something that I might use. So I have to say that with the inconvenience that it might be causing for the period of time that it will be developed and built, when it is finally fully built, that we will enjoy it as a community, and it will be beautiful, and there will be opportunities for you to enjoy. I know the restaurant is out there, but let me tell you, there weren't any restaurants on Spouse either when I first moved here. And now there's a dozen different Mexican restaurants, there's family restaurants, and you walk to them. I mean, it's, you know, who would have guessed that they were going to be that close to a community, but they are. And we enjoy them now, and they're part of our community. And so I'm just commenting that we have to be willing to accept, we have to be, to embrace change, we have to embrace new people that come into the area as well. And we're not going to be here forever. This is a good use of this land. It's, as mentioned, it could sit there and rot forever, but it is, at this point in time, it's a good use for this land. And I want to thank you so much for coming to our community, bringing these wonderful ideas, putting together plans to assist and help Unit 20 in their concerns and the traffic and, you know, I understand what it's like to drive and worry about getting broken windshields and flat tires from nails and all of that. I went through that many, many times when all these developments, they weren't here when I moved here. And when they were being built, it was a problem. And now it isn't. And now they're beautiful, beautiful developments. So we want to thank you so much for coming to our community. And I just ask you, as a group and as a town, that we embrace this and that we learn to enjoy the opportunity to go out there and use the restaurant because it will be open to the public, and there'll be other things out there that will be open to the public as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Greer, did you have anything to add? Mr. Polk, going back to the traffic study, was there, maybe you're not the person to answer this, was there a number that would take traffic off of Navajo by having the addition of Mendocino?
I'll call our traffic guy, Jesse Dowling, up on this one.
The reason I ask is I did have a couple residents who live on Navajo who expressed support just because of, they heard about this road and they were hoping that it would alleviate some traffic, and I just didn't know if there was a number for that.
All right. Let me dig into my papers here. Let's see here. I don't find the exact, there's a lot of numbers. Let's see here. So yeah, essentially, this will provide options. So I know there's a lot of concern that, you know, folks are concerned that it's going to turn Sheridan into a more traveled path. This will, when we ran the study, we did account for certain percentages exiting from there using this alternate route. Basically, anything that this does, this will just add capacity regardless. So it will assist in any shortcomings at other intersections just by adding that option for people to use. To dig out an exact number, I need to go through my table a little bit more, I can get that to you. But that is being shared with your city engineer and planner, and so, you know, that is our goal, is to, that's the goal of that whole Mendocino thing, was to try and address the concerns about traffic.
And did your traffic study, did it look into the amount of traffic that would proceed north past Mendocino, past Superstition into the community, like additional traffic of those who wouldn't live there?
Yeah, yes, it did. We accounted for the percentages and options that people take when they're going to, basically, we go through and we reanalyze it, get an extra number, and then we reassign and reattribute all those trips using various percentages and formulas throughout the neighborhoods to the places that they would make the most sense. So we have accounted for that, and that is all complete in the traffic study.
Thank you, sir. Council, is there anything else? Any other questions? Councilman Hapley? This time, I don't have a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I motion to read ordinance number 2024-936 by title only on two separate occasions, then place the same on final passage.
Mr. Mayor and Council, could I ask if that motion includes the two extra conditions that were recommended by Vice Mayor Hunt?
Could you repeat those conditions, please?
Yes, the fencing on both sides of Mendocino being required and no construction traffic outside of traveling on Mendocino.
Okay, so fencing on both sides of Mendocino?
Yes, and no construction traffic except on Mendocino.
Except on Mendocino.
I would need to know if that was going to have a time limit for, is it during construction only of this project, or is that for future?
The way I would write it would be that the fencing would be constructed at the same time as the roadway without any reference to it always being there. And then I would write it to say that during the period of any construction, it would only be on Mendocino.
Would this also, would this be outside the 10? Oh, that, the walking path?
Yes, the walking path and the roadway. It would need to be on the, probably along the right-of-way, and they're talking about a 100-foot right-of-way.
And is there any description of what type of fencing we're talking about?
Cattle fencing.
Cattle fencing.
Cattle fencing, okay.
Standard.
Standard, okay. All right.
To include both, to include both.
Okay, yes, to include both.
And I'll second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
The passes, Mayor, 5 to 1.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ordinance number 2024-936. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 23-007, for the AZ Senior Living Community Project located southeast of Superstition Drive and Sheridan Lane, 10,000 University Drive, from PLPAD, Public Lands Planned Area Development, to RSPAD, Residential and Services Planned Area Development zoning, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 7B, adoption of alternative local expenditure limitation. Ms. Morris, welcome. And this is also a public hearing, which I'll open up right now.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for the accommodation, first of all, allowing me to sit and present. Tonight, we do have a public hearing regarding the town's request to extend the alternative expenditure limitation or home role option. Let me grab the remote for one moment. By way of recap, if we don't have the alternative expenditure limitation in place, we would be held accountable or subject to the state imposed limitation. The state imposed limitation was created in fiscal year 1980, based upon the town's profile as well as local revenues. At that time, sorry, at that time, the town was very different. You may recall that. There was a lot of unpaved roads, so the road maintenance obligation was very minimal. We did not have community services, we did not have public safety, nor did we have municipal utilities. So this would allow us to actually take advantage of an expenditure limitation that was an alternative. The first time that the town of Prescott Valley passed the alternative limitation was in 1981, and that was through voter approval. Since that time, every four years, we've gone back to the voters for an additional extension. This year, we're heading up on the end of our four-year extension, which was granted in 2020. So we're required to do two public hearings. The first one is tonight, and the second one is on March 28th. The intent of the, of the public hearings is to make sure that we establish the need for an alternative limitation. If the council supports the alternative limitation, there will be a special meeting after the second public hearing where you can vote or approve, putting it on the ballot for the primary election held on July 30th. So the way that the state has written the law is that we must prove a need, and the way that we do that is they designate, being sure that we identify the expenditures that we expect in the next four-year period, which would be when the home role would be effective. These are only estimates, and so the council actually has the ability to approve the expenditure limitation year by year during the budget process. So these are just examples based on, for example, the general operations right now is an estimate of what all of our operations from general administration, finance, HR, to municipal utilities, to public safety. Capital improvements are based on the last five-year approved capital improvement plan. Debt service is based on what we currently have in place for debt. And then road construction includes not only road construction, but also maintenance. So these are our current estimates. One additional item that's important to note is that the alternative expenditure limitation is a budgetary item only, and so it does not increase taxes and it does not increase fees or anything like that. It just allows the city to expend the money that they currently receive in revenues. The next slide shows you what our resources are, so the state does require us to also... So the state does require us to also break down our resources based on federal, state, and local sources. The federal portion is mostly grant, anticipated grant expense revenues. The state portion is mostly state shared revenues. And then the local portion is mostly, TPT is about 60% of it, and then we have fees and licenses and permits and that type of thing. The bulk of that also could be the use of fund balance from prior year's collections of TPT tax. So the calculation does also make us go through an exercise where we want to see what that state imposed limitation would be under the original legislation. So what we do is we use the numbers that are provided by the Economic Commission under the state of Arizona, and we take that population each year and divide it by the original population from 1979, 80, when the legislation was passed, which was 1,520 people. That gives us a population factor that we use in the next calculation. So in the 1979, 1980 fiscal year, our base limitation, again, based on local revenues and local, our current profile of what services we offered, was $380,000. We take the population factor that we just calculated using our Census Bureau population, divided by our original population, and multiply that. Then we take an inflation factor that's provided also by the state of Arizona to come up with what our projected state imposed limitation would be. And then what we do is we add back things that are excluded from limitations. So when you have revenues from either debt service, certain investment funds, that type of thing, those aren't subject to the limitation, expenditure limitation, so we are allowed to add that back in to come up with the total expenditures under the state imposed limit. So this slide shows you the gap between what would be the state imposed limit versus what the projected home rule expenditure limitation would be. And again, the council would actually pass that on an annual basis as part of the budget process. But you can see, starting in '25, '26, the difference would be $92 million. So it's pretty much ranging between $48 million and $108 million between the estimate that would be state imposed versus the expenditure limitation that we would bring towards the to the council every year if the home rule option is sent before the voters and approved. I think with that...
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, I just want to really stress, because this is a very important process that every city goes through in the state of Arizona. And in our case, and Ms. Morris really highlighted this, because of when this, when the state law was created, we were a much smaller community. This, if the voters don't approve this, this, there is no tax rebate, there's no savings back to residents at all. The money just gets held, we just can't spend it. And if you look at that $92 million impact, that $92 million would just sit there not being spent. It doesn't go back to the voters, but we would have to cut dramatically from all of our operations to be able to meet that state imposed limitation.
Mr. Davidson, or Ms. Morris, you might know, is there a community in Arizona that this has ever happened where they go with this, the home state or the state rule?
With the state imposed limitation?
Yes.
Actually, Dewey-Humboldt does not have an alternate expenditure limitation, but all of the other Quad cities do. In fact, Chino Valley this year is going before the voters as we are, and then next year will be the city of Prescott Valley. But there are about 41, 42 cities and towns that have the home rule option.
Gotcha. Thank you, ma'am.
And it has happened, not very often, but it's happened in a couple of communities in Arizona, and they've had some pretty difficult times that they had to work through to, they, two years later, the citizens went, oh, my goodness, and approved it.
And then this goes, employees are fired, libraries open a couple times a week, parks are closed down for maintenance, that's what happens by not approving this. Council, are there any other questions? Are there any, it is a public hearing, so anyone out in the audience, do they wish to speak on this topic?
Can we speak up?
On this topic?
We can. We can.
All right. With that being said, public hearing closed. And any other questions for Ms. Morris?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
The passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone, have a great day.